All right. All right, guys, we're going to start. All right, good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of November fourteenth. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we are thrilled to see everybody this evening. It's usually us talking to ourselves, so it's lovely to have people in the audience occasionally. Mrs. Rain, I'm going to prevail upon you to read our public announcements in upcoming meetings.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuan School of Reuse Committee, Master Plan Steering Subcommittee, Memorial Day of Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Applications for the Hanson Community Christmas are now available at the Town Hall and the Library. If you are seeking assistance this holiday season, the application needs to be completed and mailed no later than Saturday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. You must include proof of Hanson residency to apply. Applications missing this information will not be considered. The annual holiday festival will take place in the town green on Saturday, December second, two thousand and twenty-three, at five to seven p.m. Upcoming meetings: Select Board Meeting, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, six p.m. And Select Board Meeting, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six p.m.
All right, thank you very much. So our first item is a hearing with the Board of Assessors -- it's a Board of Assessors Classification Hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, a public hearing will be held in Select Board Conference Room, Town Hall, Hanson, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six p.m. for allocating the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. All interested taxpayers are encouraged to present oral or written information on their views. This is a necessary hearing, which must be held prior to the certification of the fiscal two thousand and twenty-four tax rate. So we are hereby opening the hearing.
Okay, and I just want to say hello. I'm Lee Gamache, I'm the Assessor Appraiser for the Town of Hanson, and I'm just speaking on behalf of my board, the Board of Assessors regrets that they couldn't be here this evening. Josh Adams, our chairman, Patricia O'Kane, who is a member, and also our Secretary Kathy Keefe. The majority of the board are assessors in other towns, and they have their classification hearings this evening, so we're not able to attend. But on their regular scheduled meeting on November sixth, the board voted the recommendations on the votes that you're going to take this evening. The board recommended that we keep a residential factor of one for the residential properties. That would make it a unified tax rate. We would not be splitting the tax rate. That's their recommendation. Number two, they voted to recommend to not adopt the residential exemption. And number three, they voted to not recommend adopting the small business exemption. Denise, my Assistant Assessor, she's going to go into more detail on that as she's going to do the presentation this evening. This is my last classification hearing for the Town of Hanson, as I will be retiring in June. And I just wanted to say it's been such a pleasure to work with the financial team here, work with different town administrators. I'm sad about going, but I'm ready to go. I shouldn't say that it might be my last, because I might end up on the board someday. So I would be here in another stage. So I'm just going to introduce Denise, and she's going to present the classification.
Denise, I'm sorry. And we would be remiss if we did not say how much we appreciate the wonderful job that you've done, your leadership, the way that you lead by example, you know, the way you conduct yourself is impeccable. And you do a great job, and you will be missed.
Good evening. So as we begin our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four classification hearing, page two of the booklet, it outlines the required actions for the Select Board and what you'd be voting on this evening. There were three votes to be considered this evening. The first one being selecting of a uniform tax rate or a split tax rate. The second one would be whether or not to adopt a residential exemption. And the third vote would be whether or not to adopt the small commercial exemption. The purpose of the classification hearing is to determine whether the Town of Hanson will continue to utilize a single rate for all classes of property or to split the rate, shifting the burden towards the commercial, industrial, and personal property from the residential class. We are here to present the information compiled by our office and for allocating the percentage of tax levy to be borne of each property class. Page three displays the scenarios of how the tax rate would shift between residential, commercial, industrial, and personal properties. Based on our current information, the tax rate is at thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four as a single rate, and that is down by eighty cents. And on page four, the pie chart just shows the percentages showing you that residential is our primary class at ninety-three percent and that the combined commercial, industrial, and personal property is at seven percent. Page five and page six present the detailed tax dollar amounts affected by the tax rate if we were to adopt a split rate using the average assessed values of a single-family home, residential, and commercial industrial properties. Hanson has such a small commercial property, such a small rate of commercial property, that adopting a split rate would shift a larger burden onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property owners. Hanson's Select Board has always voted to maintain a single rate for this reason, and the Board of Assessors have recommended a uniform tax rate for FY two thousand and twenty-four. So your first vote of the evening is whether or not to adopt a uniform tax rate or a split tax rate.
Okay, so I know some of you have been through the hearing before. I'm looking at you because I'm hoping you're going to make the motions. And so we take each of the choices of required action. So the first one is the residential factor.
So I will make a motion to adopt a uniform commercial class rate, factor of one.
Is that what you guys?
It's actually a uniform tax rate across the board, all properties, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property.
So moved. I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Okay, so page seven and eight give you a three-year comparison of values for the average single-family condominium and commercial industrial property. And as you can see, the values have been increasing every year, and the tax rate has been decreasing.
And Denise, I'm sorry, can we put a pin right there for a moment? So, you know, I hear people say, oh, the tax rates in Hanson, they're crazy. They're taxing us out of our houses. So I think it's important for people to hear what you're saying. It's really the fact that the values of everybody's properties are increasing, as is the case all around the country, that folks, it's not that we're increasing tax rates. So I just want to make sure that people are hearing what you're saying.
So the values are increasing, as you can see in real estate. Across the board, they're going up, and they're being adjusted every year based on hundred percent fair market value. That's bringing the values up every year consistently until that ends up coming to plateau and maybe going the other way. You'll see your values continue doing that until it goes the other way. And, yeah, and the tax rate, of course, is a budget, for the budget, and it's based on, it usually goes around, down that tax rate when the values go up.
And we've got this interesting thing, which has been ongoing historically, where the average value of a condo is fairly close to the average value of a house.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. It's amazing. Some of the condo sales that have been coming in are, you know, we've seen them close to seven even really, right? They're very high. Yeah, really, they're in sync with the, right, the single-family's residential property.
Okay.
How would you like me to word this?
Any way you'd like.
Just cut to the chase.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we do not recommend residential exemption. Is that what you want to do?
Well, I haven't got to that actually yet. I haven't read about, to explain that, what the residential--
Okay.
So that will be the next one, whenever you're ready. So on page nine, there's two other votes to be taken here, and that one's a residential tax exemption and the other's small commercial exemption. So the residential tax exemption is for property owners of Class One residential properties who own and occupy their property. A percentage is applied to the exempt dollar amount of the value, to exempt a dollar amount of value that is exempt from taxation. Typically, you see this in communities that have a high rate of rental properties, like you would see in the city, Boston, or Cape Cod and the Islands, where they have many rental properties in their towns. Historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the residential tax exemption. And the Board of Assessors also has opted not to adopt the residential exemption because it would shift the residential, would shift actually the tax rate, the residential tax rate would go up for those higher-valued homes in town and also for apartments and rentals and things like that. So the Board of Assessors usually recommends not to. They don't want to shift that burden.
Okay, so I'll make a motion not to adopt the residential tax exemption.
So, any further discussion?
Seconded. She's seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Right.
So the next is the small commercial exemption. And legislation in nineteen ninety-four added an option to the property tax classification law. It is the responsibility of the Select Board to decide if a small commercial exemption will be adopted by the Town of Hanson. Adoption of the provision does not guarantee that the reduction in taxes will be passed on to the small business owners as the exemption is applied to the real estate. For example, if Shaw's Plaza was valued under a million dollars and that each business in there had an average of ten employees or less during two thousand and twenty-three, the Plaza owner would qualify and receive the exemption, not the individual business owners. And according to the Department of Employment and Training, Hanson has forty-nine businesses which would qualify for the small business exemption if each was situated in a property assessed under a million dollars. Thirty-two businesses occupy the properties, yet they don't own them and would only benefit if the property owner passed the savings on to the business owners. And only seventeen business owners would benefit from the exemption. And historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the small business exemption. And the Board of Assessors recommends not to adopt the small commercial exemption, where it would shift the tax burden to the remaining commercial, industrial properties. And that's your third vote for this evening.
So I'll make a motion that we do not adopt the small commercial exemption.
We seconded it. Any further discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, great. All right.
Lastly, I just must notify the Select Board of the excess levy capacity for two thousand and twenty-four. The excess levy capacity is currently at twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five and three cents. This does not require a vote. This is just a notification as part of the classification requirements. On behalf of the Board of Assessors and the entire assessing department, I'd like to thank our financial team, Eric Kinship and Treasurer Collector Jean Sullivan, for their diligent work. And this concludes my two thousand and twenty-four classification presentation.
All right, excellent job, as usual.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And that will, unless anybody has any further comments, we're going to close the hearing. Okay, great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our full agenda. We have the order of taking for Alder, Stringer, and Gray Lane, and I have something to read for that as well. I hereby, I hereby open the public hearing for the following takings as authorized pursuant to Article thirty of the October second, two thousand and twenty-three session of the Hanson Special Town Meeting, notice having been provided to the owners noted below on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. One, a permanent easement for all purposes for which public ways are used in the Town of Hanson, including the installation and maintenance of utilities over, in, under, through, and upon those parcels of land depicted as Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane, shown on a plan of land entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan of Alden Way, prepared by SciTech Inc., thirteen Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., zero-two-seven-four-five, dated April twenty-second, nineteen ninety-seven, last revived, revised, excuse me, on July fourteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan eight oh three of nineteen ninety-seven and Plan Book forty, pages six fifty-two to six fifty-nine, as modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Stringer Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., thirteen Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., zero-two-seven-four-five, dated February third, nineteen ninety-eight, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan seven oh one of nineteen ninety-eight and Plan Book forty-one, page seven oh six, and is modified by a plan entitled Modification of Definitive Subdivision Plan of Gray Lane, prepared by SciTech Inc., thirteen Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass., zero-two-seven-four-five, dated November twentieth, nineteen ninety-eight, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan twenty of nineteen ninety-nine and Plan Book forty-one, page nine fifty-six. Two, a permanent easement for drainage purposes in that parcel of land depicted on Lot one as twenty-five, drainage easement, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three, plus or minus square feet on the plan, said drainage purposes to include, without limitation, the use of the easement premises to direct, collect, and dispose of drainage waters wherever they may originate, and in order to facilitate such purposes to construct, inspect, repair, remove, replace, operate, and forever maintain thereon drains, pipes, detention basins, and other structures associated therewith. Three, a permanent easement for drainage purposes in that parcel of land depicted on Lot six as twenty-five, wide drainage easement, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine, plus or minus square feet on the plan, said drainage purposes to include, without limitation, the use of easement premises to direct, collect, and dispose of drainage waters wherever they may originate, and in order to facilitate such purposes to construct, inspect, repair, remove, replace, operate, and forever maintain thereon drains, pipes, detention basins, and other structures associated therewith. Four, a permanent easement for drainage purposes in that parcel of land depicted on Lot eleven as drainage easement, four thousand, three hundred and ten square feet, point ten, plus or minus acres, on the plan, said drainage purposes to include, without limitation, the use of the easement premises to direct, collect, and dispose of drainage waters wherever they may originate, and in order to facilitate such purposes to construct, inspect, repair, remove, replace, operate, and forever maintain thereon drains, pipes, detention basins, and other structures associated therewith. Five, a permanent easement for drainage purposes in that parcel of land depicted on Lot twelve as drainage easement, four thousand, one hundred and seventeen, plus or minus square feet on the plan, said drainage purposes to include, without limitation, the use of easement premises to direct, collect, and dispose of drainage waters wherever they may originate, and in order to facilitate such purposes to construct, inspect, repair, remove, replace, operate, and forever maintain thereon drains, pipes, detention basins, and other structures associated therewith. The purpose of the taking is to complete the layout and acceptance of Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane as public ways. The Select Board has determined to award no damages for this taking to the affected lot owners that abut Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane. Two, all those speaking in favor, is this where I?
So this is--
Okay. I was like, this is very like-- So did anybody here want to speak in favor of this taking? Yes.
We have the hearing for six thirty-five, does that matter? We've still got fifteen minutes, according to the clock, so--
Thank you, no, thank you very much.
I wanted to stop you halfway through, but you were on a roll.
You couldn't stop me on the first bullet?
You were on a roll. I thought you knew something I didn't know.
You couldn't start at the words "over."
You know what? No, no, thank you very much.
Well, she gets going, she gets going.
It's true. Once they get on a roll, it's hard to start.
We have to wait till six thirty-five.
All right, well, you know what? We'll get some other business accomplished.
And who reads the next?
For the love of Mike, I have no intention of reading all of that again.
No, move it as originally spoken.
I don't think anybody wants to live through that. Okay, well, fortunately, that will bring us to the Pembroke Resolves discussion. And I believe we've got members of the Pembroke Historical Society here, and we've got all types of displays, and this is quite a lively, interactive type of thing that we very seldom get here, so we're thrilled about it. So I don't know who wanted-- Yeah, Kurt, did you want to?
So my name is Kurt Harvis, President of the Hanson Historical Society and also Chairman of the Hanson Historical Commission. Today we have a handful of guests with us. I didn't catch your name, unfortunately.
Scotch and Heron, among the board members.
Okay, so we're also joined by Miles Prescott and Chick Cushing as well. So I'm going to let them take over here. And--
So we also have--
We also have--
Oh, we have even more. I didn't even get to everybody more yet.
Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of Pembroke, Andrew Bubel, and Tracy Foote.
Wow.
The mind that serves.
Well, we're thrilled to have, well, thrilled to have all of you guys. Thank you for making the very long trip to Hanson.
This will be interesting, more interesting than taxes, but it is actually about taxes, really. The Resolves.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm being directed to ask you to come to our table, our inquisition table.
Inquisition table.
Yes.
Want to bring out the chairs up there?
Yeah, okay. I'm co-chair of the Historical Commission with Miles, but not the Society.
Oh, I think you guys do great work. I like your page on Facebook. I've attended a couple of events, and I know we've got a lot of simpatico, you know, goals here between the two towns, so I'm thrilled to have you guys.
Thank you, thank you. So he's the expert on Resolves. I'll just kind of lead into, and Chick here came up with the idea of including selectmen from both sides. So in two thousand and eight, Josh Cutler, he put Pembroke Day, Pembroke Resolves Day in place. So we've got this nice plaque here. Pass it along. So this is our sixth time we've had it. We keep trying to, we keep trying to improve it and do different things. So essentially, the Resolves, and we have copies of the Resolves, we can pass out the Ten Commandments, well, the Ten Result-- Yeah, you have that.
Yep, we have that, yep.
And so that was basically a document that was one of the most innovative at the time of separation between England and the colonies. And so there was five signers of that. And one of them, Abel Stetson, was from Hanson, in Second Parish. And his house actually still exists. The Stetson Cemetery is across, near Stetson Pond. So he's, he was one of the, actually, his nickname was Firebrand, so he was very passionate. And so he actually, we did, we created a reenactment. So we'd love to have, if you guys know some good actors, because we're not very good actors. We have, the Quaker of the group is a good actor, but, so, but, so anyway, we have a reenactment, which a lot of it, Abel Stetson talks about a lot of the religious side of the Resolves and God. And he actually trained, Gadd Hitchcock was from the Second Parish. Most of you have heard of him, and so he trained--
Right, his house is Hanson Insurance now.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, Quaker, still standing. So he actually did training of military folks in the French-Indian War in the seventeen fifties. And then he was very, he was a very big advocate and spokesperson. So he spoke against the British in Boston, very controversial. I think Samuel Adams gave him a suit or something like that. So we, in the enactment, Abel Stetson talks a lot about Gadd Hitchcock. So you have two folks that are very integral to this whole, this whole thing. So we have, you know, we talk about the, how the Resolves came about, the role of the American Revolution, that we do the reenactment. And then we had a selectman last year read one of the Ten Resolves. So we'd like to have Hanson and Pembroke combined for five, you know, five and five, hopefully. And they can, these selectmen can tell you, it's not hard, it's not, it's not like, we don't grill you or anything. It's very easy. You can pick the one with the shortest hair, too.
We all will.
No, we'd love, we'd love to partner with you on that.
Oh, great, great, great. So you don't need to talk. Well, he's got, he's got some, how the Resolves came about, if you can do it in two minutes rather than two hours.
Two minutes, okay. So the Pembroke Resolves--
Pamphlet.
The pamphlets, okay. So basically, the whole revolution is, the whole revolution of war comes out of the, of the French-Indian War, and the taxes and the pressure put on the colonies by the British, direct taxes as opposed to indirect taxes. And there's a interest, that one of the things that kicks the whole thing off is the governor of the Commonwealth, Tom Hutchinson, was secretly writing letters back to the British Parliament in the seventeen seventies, asking the British government to punish his own citizens because of the trouble they were causing. He is, his own house was burned by the, by radicals in Boston. His son-in-law's house was burned and looted by patriots in Boston. And so he was asking for the British to send troops here. He was asking for all kinds of punishments for his own citizenry. These letters were intercepted by Benjamin Franklin, who was the postmaster general for the North American colonies, and sent them back to Boston. And so one of the, as the Boston legislature, the Massachusetts legislature finds out that their own governor is trashing them and asking for them to be punished, this creates a firestorm of anti-British feeling. In addition to that, the British had shift, were shift, were trying to shift the salaries of tax collectors and people in the port from the legislature to the Parliament. In other words, the Boston government would not have any control over the tax collectors. And that kind of freaked out the mass legislature. As a result, they formed committees of correspondence, and they penned a nine-page pamphlet called, now called the Boston Pamphlet. And the Boston Pamphlet listed grievances, listed rights that they thought North American colonies had. They listed grievances against the Crown. And then they asked all the towns in Massachusetts to respond to these, to this pamphlet. And a number of towns did. About thirty towns actually penned something like the Pembroke Resolves. Of course, now Pembroke and Hanson, they're joined. Anyone that doesn't know, they're the same town. Hanson's the Second Parish. And if you look at, one of the things that stimulated my interest in this was looking at the service of Hanson and Pembroke soldiers in the French and Indian War. And the serve, the volunteer rates and the service rates were quite high for both, for Pembroke. And as many soldiers came from this part of town as came from the First Parish, Pembroke. At any rate, five people penned, there was a committee of correspondence for Pembroke Town Meeting, they penned the Pembroke Resolves. And what was interesting about the Pembroke Resolves was that it was the strongest suggestion for independence that had been made anywhere in the colonies to date. So that's kind of why we're, we think it's important, the Pembroke Resolves are important. And that's why, that's one of the reasons that we celebrate them. And we're hoping that you folks will, will join us in that, that celebrates the proud revolutionary tradition of First and Second Parish.
So, thanks, Steve. And so it's January seventh at the First Church where the Resolves was signed. And there's a plaque in the back of the church, so it'll start at eleven-thirty. It'll probably go maybe an hour, maybe an hour, hour and a half. And then afterwards, we can go to the Historical Society for some refreshments and such. And so the part where you guys would be speaking is towards the end of the presentation. But what we did, this is an old sign that was in the church, which talks about the role of the First Church and the signing of the Resolves. And then a few years back, we basically put together documents of what the Resolves said. And then the Boston, one of the Boston papers wrote about it in January of seventeen seventy-three, so they had a different language, of course, than-- of 1773, so they had a different language, of course, than, than us farmers in Pembroke. And then we used a decoder ring to make a new, like, translation of the words. Some of the words you'll see are very strange, and so we, we have those, and we'll have, we'll have it televised as well. So I was glad Chick had the idea of bringing the two towns together, because it makes a lot of sense to do, so.
It does. I always think it's much more powerful when we can bring people together that have got a common, you know, commonality, like a common cause. And Gadd Hitchcock was a fascinating guy. I had the pleasure of going to the anniversary of the Congregational Church up there and listening to how influential he was in a lot of the politics of the country at the time, and I don't really think that most people in Hanson realize how influential he was, and what an interesting guy he was. So, so guys, do you, do you want to take a vote for us to participate in this? I don't know that we have to be that formal, but it might be beneficial, and if so, I will entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to, for Hanson to participate in Pembroke Resolves.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Easy.
Great, great. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And before we go, we're doing the, the Boston Tea Party is coming up, the 215th, and we bought this, the Boston Tea Party gave us this tea bag, so we're collecting tea, loosely, tea bags. December 2nd is the last day, that's when we have our tree lighting, but it's.
Kurt gave me one.
Did you get one?
Thank you.
So we're collecting tea. A guy from, a guy from the Boston Tea Party actually moved down to Hanover so he could be part of this, so that's what I tell people. So he brought this, this basically, this B stands for United, so it's United East India Company. So they brought this to us, and we've been filling it up. So we've got 30 donations already, so come on by. Kurt's going to bring some tea. You can even actually take a tea bag and just cut it if you need to. It's like.
Well, that's a great idea. And what.
So no teeth. It's very explicit, no teeth.
You're not dumping this tea in Alden Pond or anything of that sort, right?
Yeah, we're going to do it all in Hanson. Or if it's in Hanson, and some of them are Hanson and Pembroke, so we just.
We appreciate that.
No, we dumped in the harbor on December 16th. We're going to try to get a bus to take everybody up there, and December 9th, they're coming to one of the, where the Beaver Bridge was built, they're coming to take our tea, and then the 16th is the Tea Party, and the 17th, we're going to have a, a big shipyard day and, for Ichabod Thomas that was from Pembroke. I think Hanson probably didn't have as many on the, it was a little far from the river, but, but everyone's related. I mean, Abel Stetson was related to several of the other signers, they were pretty close.
So, Miles, could you speak, isn't there an international, aren't there other, there's tea coming from all over the?
Well, yeah, the, the East India Company sent like 200 pounds of tea.
Oh, wow.
And there's some coming from Tunisia. A friend of mine, a Costa Rican guy, said, "Bring tea," and he goes, "We don't make tea here," but they actually, they, they, with the coffee, the buds, the flower buds become tea, so, so.
It seems a shame to be dumping all of these exotic teas into the.
You can donate the tea and then have it, have the letter, the commemorative letter will be sent from the Tea Party that your tea was dubbed.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So you could have it sent to like a grandparent or something, and they'll be like, "Wow."
That's great. Thank you so much, guys.
Good creative. I like that a lot. Take care. They must have been watching the clock. Love it. It was perfect. Now we're good.
Superior since close, let's see, well, look at that.
Six thirty-five.
It's an early Christmas miracle, okay.
All right, that would have been a nightmare. Thank you, Joe.
Well, you hear this extremely similar to what we've heard, a little bit different.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm reading what Kate gave us.
Yeah.
This is for, the first one, right? Yes.
She read these bullet points.
No, no, but this one has a motion on it, and I'm assuming that they prepped this so that it don't screw up.
All right, so we'll get back to our hearing.
Yep, yep.
All right. So we had just gotten to the point where prefatory language had been read, and we were just going to ask, is there anybody?
So I think we want to reopen the public hearing for the reasons.
We'd like to reopen the public hearing for Alden Stringer and Gray for the Order of Taking pursuant to the Article 30 of October 2nd, 2023 session of the Hanson Special Town Meeting.
As more specifically stated.
Fifteen minutes ago.
Six minutes ago. Fifteen minutes ago.
Okay, so we're now to the point of the hearing where we will hear from those, if anybody would like to share, that are in favor of this.
Definitely in favor.
We know where you stand, Ms. Green. You're on the record. Anybody else feel, you know?
What I question is just basically the formality of that one.
So this is the formality that we need to effectuate the eminent domain, domain process, whereby the town takes the property from, from private owners, okay? And to be clear, for any banks that are listening, we're taking the roadway and the drainage easements, which help us keep the roadways clear and usable, so.
And I believe Ms. Green's been getting a lot of calls about that.
Yes.
A lot of calls from mortgage companies that were a little nervous.
So, yes, this is the, the next process. If this goes through this evening, then you all will receive a notice stating where, how the documents were properly recorded in the Registry of Deeds, and it will all be on record, and you will be proud property owners of property on a public way.
Okay, so.
And then ask if anyone's saying in, in opposition.
Yeah, is there anybody here?
Oh, well, that was the next on here, anyway. Is there anybody here who has any opposition to this?
I'm a little bit faithful attendee, so I don't think so.
All right. Should we hum a few show tunes, or, you know?
We could do show tunes, or you, if, if no one has any questions or concerns, you can move to the motion, which is also going to be a, a small torture.
Yes, so I, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'm going to, I need you to make that motion.
I was going to try to do one breath. There's no way I'm going to do this one. All right. I hereby move that the Select Board acquire by eminent domain for municipal purposes, more specifically to complete the layout and acceptance of Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane as a public way, as authorized pursuant to Article 30 of the October 2nd, 2023 session of the Hanson Special Town Meeting, and further to authorize the Chair, Laura Fitzgerald Kemen, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. A permanent easement for all purposes for which public ways are used in the Town of Hanson, including the installation and maintenance of utilities over and under, through and upon those parcels of land depicted on, as Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane, shown on a plan of land entitled definitive subdivision plan of Alden Way, prepared by Sitech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass. 02745, dated April 22nd, 1997, last revised on July 14th, 1997, and recorded with the Plymouth County Register, Registry of Deeds as Plan 803 of 1997 and Plan Book 40, pages 652 through 659, as modified by a plan entitled modification of definitive subdivision plan of Stringer Lane, prepared by Sitech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass. 02745, dated February 3rd, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Register of Deeds as Plan 701 of 1998 and Plan Book 41, page 706, and as modified by a plan entitled modification of definitive subdivision plan of Gray Lane, prepared by Sitech Inc., 13 Welby Road, New Bedford, Mass. 02745, dated November 20th, 1998, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds as Plan 20 of 1999 and Plan Book 41, page 956, and any, I don't know how to say that word.
Appertinent.
Appertinent drainage, utility, or other easements related thereto. And further, the Select Board award no damages for said eminent domain taken.
Will I entertain a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. All in favor?
Sorry. Will all this take place within that 120 days?
Yes, so we have to record within 30 days of tonight, and it's all going to happen pretty immediately, probably within the week.
Okay.
Okay, okay, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great.
Perfect.
All right, thank you so much. That will conclude that hearing, and we have to wait until 7:05 for the Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way. Thank you, guys.
Well, congratulations. A little something for me to mention.
Thank you. Well, unless you move to another private road.
Glad it worked out.
Just don't move, Mrs. Crawford. That's all we ask.
Okay, and then, just so we're clear, before you go, there are two documents that you'll want to sign before you leave tonight. One is the motion that you'll sign, and the other is the Order of Taking, and Lynn has copies of both.
Okay, all right. Lynn, did we want to circulate that while we move on with the rest of our business?
This is the motion.
Okay. Ms. Green, I'm going to turn it over to you for reminder of audio/video recordings of meetings.
This is the Order of Taking.
Okay, yes, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the boards, we just want to remind all our committees and boards and commissions that there is a bylaw that was adopted at the October 2022, I believe it was, Special Town Meeting, that basically requires all committees, boards, and commissions to either or videotape or audiotape their meetings. Once that is done, you can contact the Whitman-Hanson Community Access, and they will provide the chairs with a link, or vice chairs, or secretary, or whoever is in charge of uploading these recordings. You can upload it onto the website for the Community Access, and then folks will be able to listen in or watch the meetings.
And Ms. Green, have we reached out to those committees/boards who we believe may not be adhering to this, and/or will you be sending out a friendly reminder? Oh, did they leave the Pembroke Resolves document here?
They did.
They did.
They might still be out there.
Is it a violation of the bylaws to not do that, right?
Yep.
I mean, possible call what it is, right?
Yes. So I, I think some of the challenges that some of the committees, boards, and our commissions faced was the lack of the audio/video equipment, but we do have equipment that is in the building that any committee, commission, or board can borrow. It's in the form of a video camera, so they can borrow any of that equipment. Whitman-Hanson Community Access will provide training, if they need it, on how to use the equipment, and again, and they do provide a link so that the meetings, the audio can be uploaded to their website. It's pretty simple, I've done it a couple of times, and then it is available for the public to access. Also, we do want to remind the committees, boards, and commissions that your agendas and minutes should all be posted on the website. If you don't have them posted on the website, we highly recommend that you do. The auditors look at all, things like that, and if they need help, they can reach out to Steve Mulberg or Therese, and they will provide them with guidance and instruction on how to upload it, the minutes and agendas to the website, so all of them should be there.
So will you be sending around an email that essentially says all of the same stuff?
We can certainly send out an email that reminds people.
I think people might have been intimidated, thinking that it had to be a video recording uploaded, but it does not.
It does not, correct.
We left plenty of latitude in that bylaw so that it was either, you know, just the, the recording or video recording.
That's correct.
So, thank you, Kate. Okay, so.
Just want to, you guys can reach out to my director, Eric Dresser, at any point. He, Whitman recently passed a similar bylaw, yes, and he worked with their new town administrator as kind of like in a consulting way about how to best kind of streamline. And Frank Moleisi has, since you guys started doing this, has been great with.
Yes.
The Camp, former rec, now Camp Colony Commission. He's been awesome with that, and we've implemented new ways of uploading, because he was doing it through Google Drive before, and now he's gone through our Dropbox, and it's been seamless, so if anybody needs to reach out to him, he'd probably help to.
Oh, that's awesome. So we've got somebody who's using it and doing, succeeding. Okay, that's awesome. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks. Before you move on, my name's Spill.
I know.
With an extra E.
I know. Kate told me you can just cross it out.
Just, just strike it, I didn't, so can you strike that E? Either that, or you could reprint it, I just don't have, I didn't prepare it, I would have.
As long as it doesn't screw anything up for, for the folks.
Yeah, no, no, I think it'll be okay.
I don't have the motions, I couldn't find them. I couldn't find them in your email either.
Okay.
That's fine, just as long as it's okay, that's fine.
So should we cross it out and like initial it or something, or like?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so you know where it is, Lynn? You saw it there, it was on the Order of TAKings, and it was just the next page, I think.
All right, I'll go up.
Okay, and then, we're the next to stop, the Town of Miners sign off on documents discussion.
Okay, yes, so this, so this, this basically comes from the conservation, the USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service. Hanson basically received a grant for restoration work for Smithy's Bog, and the USDA, who is, I believe it's a grant, the USDA who is administering this, is requiring, requiring a vote of the board for me to be able to sign the letter as an organizational signatory authority.
What does the letter say?
So the letter states, it's from Ms. Natasha Suwabi, the USDA National Resources Conservation Service, 451 West Street, Amherst, Mass. 010012, organizational signatory authority. So basically, this is a letter from us to her. Dear Ms. Suwabi, as requested and in connection with me being authorized to sign contracts and other documents on behalf of the Town of Hanson, attaches a copy of a corporate resolution from the Town of Hanson Select Board confirming such authority. The corporate resolution remains currently in effect. Thank you for your attention to this letter, and should you have any questions, be, please feel free to contact me. And in the back is the corporate resolution with the contract signing that basically be it resolved that their regular scheduled meeting on, it would say today's date, November 14th, 2023, the Hanson Select Board, a Massachusetts not-for-profit corporation, reconfirmed that the organization, Town of Hanson, certify, under the pains and penalties of perjury, that Lisa M. Green, Esquire, Town Administrator, is authorized to execute contracts and other instruments and legally binded, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, instruments and legally bind the organization.
I, I mean, I'm fine with that, but I believe it's redundant under the Town Administrator Act, you're empowered to sign things on behalf of the town, so I don't know why they need something specific calling out your ability, but perhaps they just don't want to have to read everybody's bylaws and what the, what each person is empowered to do, so they just do this across the board.
Exactly, I mean, it's the USDA, so it's on the federal level, so they, they might have a different process. And what's kind of interesting is that I did look through the bylaw to see if that was specific, and I actually didn't see language in the bylaw that specifically authorizes me to be the signatory. So there's probably language in there, but as far as the USDA, I don't know if they would accept it, so.
So I will entertain a motion to empower, I'm trying to sign and talk at the same time.
Lisa Green Esquire.
Lisa Green Esquire, to sign on behalf of the Town of Hanson for the USDA contract.
So.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great. And then that brings us to High Street Park Recreation Committee's discussion. I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Is that a you thing? I'll talk about it.
I think it's your thing.
Yeah, I did ask for it to be on the agenda.
You did ask for that.
Yeah, I just don't know if anyone.
I'm thinking, did I come up with this on my own?
I asked for it to be on the agenda, just wasn't sure if any, any work had been done in the.
Okay.
So, long story short is, the Recreation Commission, the Recreation Committee, the way it is established right now is we only have one person on the, on the committee.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if it's because, as we had discussed last meeting. And I'm wondering if it's because, as we had discussed last meeting, if it's because we didn't give them a mission and a vision, and probably like some tasks to do.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if we want to have the conversation around giving them, really starting the conversation on giving the Recreation Committee some type of task to figure out. And then where High Street Park plays into this is, according to some grants and how we lay out some of the funding and maintenance of the High Street Park when it's inevitably worked on and then is constructed, we need to have a body in charge of that, to help us fund grants and basically just, you know, get somebody in charge of it.
And it can't be the slot board, right?
I don't think so, I think it has to be some, like an entity...
Specific for that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I'm wondering if the Recreation Committee, especially the way it sits now, if we could designate within their overarching umbrella of responsibilities, if we could put them in charge of this, so as we start going through the grant process, or any other time, we need to have a collaborative relationship with that body, because at a certain point, the High Street Park Committee is going to be dissolved because its task of doing something with the land is going to be done. So I'm wondering if we just move forward with that.
All right, so do we want to, excuse me, did you, I'm sorry, Mr., did you say that they spelled your name wrong?
No, he's just being...
All right, I was like...
I'm so nervous.
I was like, for the love of Mike, okay, all right, somebody's a jokester down there, all right. So, I think what you're, what, I understand what you're saying, so basically, could we say that the Recreation Committee's objective is to be in charge of just Plymouth?
No, I think it's twofold, so I think the big thing is, is should we, as a body that created the Recreation Committee, should we give it something? Should we be the ones that tells the people that join it what to do? And then, part B of that is, can we roll in the oversight of the High Street Park project once it's completed, like the maintenance of it? Can we roll that into a portion of what they're in charge of?
I personally think yes to both. I think that we need to reimagine what that committee's going to be, and is it in fact going to be a committee, or will it be a commission, which will require us to take a separate vote at town meeting to either, well, to create the Camp Kewaunee Commission, because we kind of changed the name of the Camp Kewaunee, of the Recreation Commission, to Camp Kewaunee, so we either need to establish a new Recreation Commission with a different set of objectives, and that, to me, that would make sense to say, clearly, there's going to be a lot of the town recreation up at the High Street Park, like, we don't really have anywhere else that would have it right now, you know? So that, to me, makes a lot of sense. Do you guys agree, or...
The one thing, the only thing that keeps coming up into my little mind is, we have a Parks and Field Commission?
It's true, yeah.
So, to me, that is redundant, as far as the parks go.
It kind of is, and this kind of gets me to, I don't want to over-engineer this, but in my mind, I was thinking, should we have a member of the Camp Kewaunee Commission, some people from Parks and Fields, somebody from the High Street Park Committee, and then Alex Stewart, who's the Recreation Committee?
Or whatever it is.
And then us, get together and talk, like, I feel like we need to do some problem-solving here, and figure out what we want each of these committees/commissions to be when they grow up, give them a vision, and then everybody can execute towards it. Do you guys agree with that, or? I mean, you've already got, for them, you've got, but I think I, to Ian's point, I kind of want the Parks and Fields guys to say, you know what, it turns out we're just fields. We're just doing sports fields. We have no intention of, we have no intention of doing anything with parks.
Right, that's where I was going with it.
And maybe we have a Parks Commission.
Because I think that it's, you know, we're splitting off into all these directions, and then we have this little orphan thing out there, this Parks and Fields, you know what I mean?
And it could be the Parks and Fields wants to absorb this responsibility, we don't know.
I absolutely do not think that's the case. I think that, yeah, I think right now, they feel very...
Are they more devoted to the sports fields?
Yeah, they're all about the sports fields, I cannot envision them wanting to take on High Street, and then eventually they'll, depending upon what happens with McQuan, there could be stuff there, I don't envision that happening. So I do think it's going to be a separate entity, because that's a whole different mindset, you know, like, get the field ready for people to play on it versus...
But they are Parks and Fields.
They are.
That's the bottom, that's my, that's my...
So they would have to modify their name if they're not going to be doing the parks.
Well, we'd modify it, but we'd just need to get, you know, I don't want anybody to feel like we're stepping on their feet, and, you know, I don't think that they'll feel that way, I think they'll be relieved that nobody's going to ask them, what do you guys do with the parks, you know, the nonexistent parks that we have. Similarly, to the Recreation Committee and Camp Kewaunee, we've got all these interchangeable terms that are being thrown around, and it just causes complete...
My little question is, we do have little playgrounds...
We do.
In little neighborhoods, all over the place. Who's responsible for those?
I mean...
Volunteers, really.
Volunteers?
Yeah, but I think that that kind of plays into where I'm kind of going with some of this recreation.
Right.
So we have a, we have a committee that's suffering from lack of volunteers, so we have a committee that is suffering from a lack of vision and tasks, so even if it evolves into something else in the future, we, at a certain point, we have to give, you know, Alex right now, a committee something to do, like, we can't, we can't ask people to apply to a committee that we haven't even...
Defined.
We haven't defined, and knowing that, we've been looking for months, you know? So I think we either have to change the name of the committee, or we have to give them a task, and then see if that works. And the one thing I can think of that is an immediate need right now, is High Street Park, because it fulfills a thing that we need in the town, but then it rolls into what you're talking about, it solves two problems right now.
It does, I agree with everything that you said, but then we still have the elephant in the room, which is what everybody bellyaches about, which is nobody organizes recreation.
Well, it'd be in the vision of, or the mission of this. We could just, that's what I'm saying, like, for right now, let's roll it all into one.
I'm totally fine with this, I just think, I'm just wondering, should we have like a chunk of a meeting where we get the players from each of the things? I don't want, again, I don't want to over-engineer it, but I do want to make sure that people don't feel disrespected in the roles that they've got, that we're like re, you know, recreating things, or like taking parks away, I don't anticipate that's a problem, but it could be.
So if I, if I take a stab at trying to put together just like a loose framework, can we try to invite representatives from all of these, so we can...
Absolutely.
I just want to...
And we will erect an author chief, if you do that. That would be amazing, yes.
Should we go and alter for reading this, but we don't screw up.
Yeah.
Would that be part of a future select board meeting, or off to the side?
No, I think we could set aside like a 30, 40, most at 45 minutes of a meeting, we would just hash it out, just get it done, you know? None of us need extra meetings on top of the other meetings that we're doing, so...
Well, that's what I'm trying to prevent, is like, having another committee about something else, where it's like the same groups of people joining four or five different committees, and it's all the same voices, so just get them in a room, let's figure it out, and then, at least it moves, it moves it.
Okay, I like your idea, if you're willing to take a stab, may I be so bold as to ask you whether you would be ready for December 5th?
We're open to that.
How about December 12th?
That would work.
Okay, great. So will you put a pin in that for the December 12th meeting? And, you know, if, say, Christmas and other things come up, and a few other things, you know, come up, then you can just renegotiate that deadline.
Yeah, no, I think I can get a pair, written in two weeks, three weeks.
All right. I was envisioning pages of, you know, things.
I know, we're going to call it the Weeks' Resolution, it's about a month, right?
We need to invite a representative from Parks and Fields, most likely it would be Adam Valkovich, and then we need to invite Frank Malisi and/or his designee, and then Alex Stewart, the lone Recreation Committee member, and I think, and then we've got, did you think anybody else from High Street needs to come, or are you good to, I mean, you're the chair, you can...
Oh, I mean, I'll ask them, I'm meeting them on Saturday anyways for the walkthrough. And you just want one representative from each, or do you, is it okay if others came?
It's fine, but they'll have to post in the event that there's some kind of deliberation. I, I'm like, the more the merrier, however, having said that, sometimes it gets a little unwieldy, so I'm hoping we can just have a person who can kind of represent the vantage point of their respective committee/board, and then we can just get it done.
Yeah, I'm thinking it would be, it would be that, and then there might be other, you know, you might say, other people from the High Street, they can be here, but not necessarily part of the deliberation, I don't know how you want to handle that.
I mean, it's all, it's all an open meeting. This isn't a lack of transparency, or whatever, but we need to get stuff done, and sometimes the more people you have trying to get it done, the less that gets done, it's just, it's the law of physics, so, okay, so, all right, are we all clear?
Yep.
On the following, Mr. Weeks made a commitment to get us something in time for the December 12th meeting, and Ms. McDowell is going to reach out to folks. Okay, great, on those respective committees. Any further discussion?
Sounds good.
Okay, great.
That's all right.
And then we've got a request by the Hanson Community Christmas Committee for the Needles Lodge to sort and package Christmas gifts, 12/13/23 and 12/14/23, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Do I have to make a motion to that?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And I'm recusing myself, because I'm part of Hanson Community Christmas, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, fantastic, did you get that, Lynn?
401.
Okay, awesome, and then, all business, Ms. McDowell, select board calendar, what say you?
So I, I made the changes that we asked, I spoke with the Clerk's Office and added all the election dates in. The only thing I still have, and I left a question mark blanked for me, is we have the presidential primary election on March 5th, and we also plan the select board strategic planning for that thing, day. We could push it to the 12th, or we could do it another day entirely?
We will have to push it, I believe that the position of the governor in this, generally of the state, is not to have any kind of board, or meetings, or anything of that sort on an election evening, regardless of whether it's state or federal, so I, for obvious reasons, and I definitely wouldn't want to have a strategic planning where we're pulling from everybody, plus, we want people to vote, so, yeah, if we can move that date, that would be awesome.
Can we move the vote, move it to the 12th without affecting the existing 12th?
Yes.
So we're not adding another meeting, we're just going to remove...
I think we can do that.
We have to close the warrant on the 12th, and we've closed articles.
Could we do it in like early February? Because I feel like the closer you go into April...
Do the strategic planning?
Yeah, because the closer we get to April and March, I mean, we're getting into...
Yeah, it gets dicey.
Yeah, it's going to be really busy, how about the 20th?
Do you want to get back to us on that? As an alternative, also, I just want to remind everybody that we had talked about for the next strategic planning, that we were going to get together and reprioritize what we were working on, so it may not be the all-hands-on-deck exercise that we had before, it may be just us taking a look at Ian's, what we originally came up with, with Ian as a result of the various, you know, interviews and all the stuff that she did to gather all of that data, and then coming up with that list of priorities, so we're really kind of looking, like, taking a fresh look and saying, are these still realistic priorities? We've made progress in some of them.
I don't disagree with that, but that flies, like, the warrant articles will already be closed, so any ideas that we, we have, we might want to put in the, in the upcoming, especially the annual town meeting.
I'm fine with that.
I think we should bump it back.
So what are you looking at, you're thinking maybe like the, maybe February 20th meeting or something like that?
It says warrant articles due on February 8th, so if that, if we're sticking to that, then I think we should go before that even.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
That means we need to already have had it practically.
Or we have to, or we have to exempt ourselves from that due date to make sure that if we do have any initiatives that come out of this planning, that we can still add it in afterwards, but that seems kind of like...
Well, we could do, well, if the due date's the 8th, then we could do the 6th, we've got a meeting scheduled for that, for February 6th.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we give ourselves enough time that we're talking about.
Yeah, because we're going to have a library update, and then if we kind of just try to keep it light, and now I've just called the universe in on myself for that day, but if we try to keep it light and do the library update, I think we could do the session with Ann Donner, check with Ann to make sure that she's available to work with us, to reprioritize the, okay, thanks, Joe, that's a good point. All right, so...
So that we're moving the strategic planning to the 6th?
Correct. In short, in a nutshell, yes. Yes, Mrs. Rain, okay.
Shall we get another version of that?
She was so close, so close. You almost did it, Lynn.
Do you want another version? Can you accept it with that change?
We can accept it with that change, yes, so I will entertain a motion to accept the 2024-2025 Select Board Calendar, with the exception of the change to add strategic planning to 2026-2024, and to remove it from whatever date it was already, thank you, 3/5.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, fantastic, we are clipping along, and did we have Mr. Mulberg?
7:05.
Oh, so, I'd love to talk to Mr. Mulberg, but we have another hearing, just a moment, okay? I don't think it will take long, because we don't have anybody here, unless maybe this person is, okay, all right, all right, hi. Okay, so, this is the order of taking for Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way, and it is 7:07, so technically we're two minutes late. So we're going to open the hearing, public hearing, I hereby open the public hearing for the following takings as authorized pursuant to Article 31 of the October 2nd, 2023 session of the Hanson Special Town Meeting, notice having been provided to the owners noted below on October 19th, 2023. A permanent easement for all purposes for which public ways are used in the Town of Hanson, including the installation and maintenance of utilities over and under through and upon that parcel of land depicted as Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way on the plans of lane, land entitled as-built plan Stonewall Estates, Litchfield Lane, Hanson, Mass., Sheet 1 and 2, dated December 21st, 2004, revised September 19th, 2005, further revised December 20th, 2005, Sheet 2 only, prepared by Robert C. Bailey Company Land Surveyors, 199 Plymouth Street, Pembroke, Mass., and as-built plan Stonewall Estates, Proudfoot Way, Hanson, Mass., Sheet 1 and 2, dated December 21st, 2004, revised September 19th, 2005, prepared by Robert C. Bailey Company Land Surveyors, 199 Plymouth Street, Pembroke, Mass., which plans are to be recorded with the order of taking collectively the plan and an pertinent drainage, utility, or other easements related thereto. And, okay, and then the purpose of the taking is to complete the layout and acceptance of Proudfoot Way and Litchfield Lane as public ways. The Select Board has determined to award no damages for this taking to the affected lot owners that abut Proudfoot Way and Litchfield Lane. And then there would be all those speaking in favor. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody want to speak against it? Okay, any further discussion? All right, then I would like to close the public hearing, and I would like to have Mr. Weeks make the motion.
We go. I hereby move that the Select Board acquired by eminent domain for municipal purposes, more specifically to complete the layout and acceptance of Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way as public ways, as authorized pursuant to Article 31 of the October 2nd, 2023 session of Hanson Special Town Meeting, and further to authorize the Chair Laura Fitzgerald Cameron to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. A permanent easement for all purposes for which the public ways are used in the Town of Hanson, including the installation and maintenance of utilities over and under through and upon the parcel of land depicted as Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way on the plans of land entitled as-built plan Stonewall Estates, Litchfield Lane, Hanson, Mass., Sheet 1 and 2, dated December 21st, 2004, revised September 19th, 2005, further revised December 20th, 2005, Sheet 2 only, prepared by Robert C. Bailey Company Land Surveyors, 199 Plymouth Street, Pembroke, Mass., and as-built plan Stonewall Estates, Proudfoot Way, Hanson, Mass., Sheet 1 and 2, dated December 21st, 2004, revised September 19th, 2005, prepared by Robert C. Bailey Company Land Surveyors, 199 Plymouth Street, Pembroke, Mass., which plans are to be recorded with the order of taking collectively the plan and any pertinent drainage, utility, and other easements related thereto, and further, the Select Board awards no damages for said eminent domain taking.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, fantastic, and that closes that hearing.
Is that the correct room?
It is, yeah.
Great, and then that brings us to, appoint Joyce Cameron to the McQuan School Reuse Committee, thank you very much, and are you Joyce Cameron? All right, well, that works out well. Um, so, um, do you mind just, yeah, popping up here to our witness stand?
Sure.
Yeah, great.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, well, we're thrilled to have somebody apply to the McQuinn reuse. Um, and we want to get it popping. Uh, we've got, um, if we appoint you, we have one other person who got appointed.
Okay.
Um, and then it will be members from the senior center. Thank you very much, Kate.
Thank you, guys.
It's been a three-way circus tonight. Um, okay. Um, we've got, uh, senior, center, library, um, parks and fields, um, and I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but, um, all kinds of different groups that might possibly benefit from the reuse of that property. But then we need a couple of at-large people to just be a sanity check on, this is what the reed of the community is, and here's some ideas that we've got from the community. So, um, so, um, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested.
Um, I'm the mom of two school-aged kids, and, um, I'd like to be involved because I see the value of creating spaces in town where families can gather with other community members, um, maybe bring in some new families to town, um, build up, um, places that just attract people to come to Hanson more. I would like to, do, do you want me to say what I've, what my ideas are for it, or just a little bit about...
Sure.
That's my question, so, yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I think a lot of, well, I, I know a lot of moms in town, and I know that a lot of us are looking for places to go with our kids that are safe. There's not a lot of sidewalks in Hanson, so I'd like to see some kind of paved walking path along, um, maybe the outskirts of whatever, if there's fields in the middle for whatever use there might be. Um, but I think paved pathways, um, maybe lights for this time of year.
Kind of like Forge Pond, the walking...
Exactly, like Forge Pond. That's what I think would be a great use of it, if there, if it's not going to be used as, you know, a site that something's going to be built. Um, I think that would be a good use. Just a, a spot for families, maybe sports-related or, um, somewhere other than, you know, the town hall, small green lot where we could do town events.
Yep.
Um, maybe more involvement with summer activities like they do at Forge Pond. I think that would really benefit the town.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Um, and are you going to ask a question that you always ask?
Oh, yeah. Um, I haven't had to ask it in so long.
Well, okay.
Um, just any, any conflicts that we need to be aware of, anything that you would like to bring up before?
Nope. I, I, um, I'm currently a stay-at-home mom. I just got a long-term subposition in Whitman, but I don't think that is affecting my ability to help the town of Hanson.
That's awesome. We're always excited to see new faces. And once we get you on McQuinn Reuse Committee... That's just the beginning. So we're excited. Anybody have any other questions?
There's a menu of other committees you can join now.
Yes. We don't want to scare you away. We don't want to scare you away. We're thrilled to have you on this.
Thank you.
We will, we will take baby steps with you.
Yeah.
Um, I will entertain a motion to, um, appoint Joyce Cameron to the McQuinn School Reuse Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, um, and we'll be in touch with you. You need to be sworn in by the town clerk. You'll get a letter from our office, you know, confirming that, what we just voted on, and then you'll have to go and get sworn in, and then we'll get you in the loop on the communications about the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Have a nice week.
You too.
All right, well, that's exciting. Um, okay. Um, and then that brings us to one-day liquor licenses.
Did we miss one?
I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. And my zeal to rush through. Okay. Mr. Mulberg?
Yes.
It's a delight to see you again, sir.
That's all.
Um, so what say you?
Yes. So, um, I have two options for the panic buttons or panic alarms.
So can you lay it up? Because people may not remember from our last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, this kind of, this was something that took place a couple of months back. Um, and Charlie was, worked on a quote with a particular vendor that we already kind of use for our alarm system that we currently have for, like, the water pipe, you know, other heating stuff and stuff anyways. And I didn't know about it until the last meeting, when I saw it on the agenda and it was brought to me that I was presenting it, and I went, oh. So I, I, I did a little bit of research and found out, you know, from our vendor that we have for the security cameras already, that they offer a similar product.
Okay.
That works, um, has a lot more features to it, and it's relatively around the same price.
And it's somebody you're already working with, so you've got that relationship.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, it's self-installed, fairly straightforward. And we have a couple of options there. The first option would be, um, standard alarm system. Somebody pushes the button, it alerts a dispatch center, which then reaches out to our, you know, the rock or, what would we set that to be? The other one is, is that, um, the option is when they hit a panic button, the cameras that are in the town hall, they do a video verification to see if it's something more than, you know, maybe just, you know, a disgruntled or a situation.
What would that involve exactly? Because we do have some union provisions, I just want to make sure.
Well, if somebody came in with, you know, with potential to harm somebody...
Okay, all right.
That video verification would say, hey, we'd, would alert, you know, responding officers of what is going on inside the town hall. So that's the second option. It's a little bit more money per year, but, um, so the total install would cost us, uh, $2,800 plus a yearly fee of $432 if we wanted to do the standard alarm. If we wanted to do the one with the video verification, that'd be $1,000 a year. So the one-time fee of $28 to get the, the products, and then $1,000 for the video a year, or $432 for the standard alarm. If we go with the secure alarm system, um, it's not currently part of, they don't offer any kind of video verification or anything, um, but that would, total cost would be $36, $3,600.
So it's more with less capabilities?
It's more with less capabilities, um, and it's a little lower cost, month, uh, well, yearly cost of like $390, where this would, with the standard alarm would be $430. So it's a little bit more money.
But if somebody you haven't worked with before, you know...
Well, we do work with them because we have them currently for an alarm system.
Okay.
So we can, we do have a current alarm system with them. So they'd just be integrating this into what they already have.
What's your recommendation? Which one are you recommending?
I think we go with the Vakata cameras, uh, Vakata, uh, panic alarms, because we already have it with our security system. And we can build off of that.
Which option?
Vakata.
The first one?
The first one, yeah, the first, the first one. So realistically, I think, you know, what I'm asking the board is if, is this something we should try to find a funding for now? Or do we shelf this and then put an article in for the May meeting?
To the extent we can find funding?
Right.
I think we ought to.
Okay.
Um, but if we can't, then we'll put it in the May town meeting, and I don't think anybody, I don't, I don't think this will be an issue getting cast.
No, definitely.
But between, uh, Ms. Green and Mr. DeFrayis, um, we, you know, check with Mr. Krenz, Sheriff, we may have a source of funding in there for security or something, you know, of that sort.
Okay.
And, and if that isn't the case, then check with Mr. DeFrayis and Ms. Green to see if they might be able to apply for, um, some type of a grant. I have to believe that there has to be some grant money for enhanced security in a town building.
Right.
I feel pretty firm about that.
Okay.
And, and then worst case, I'd say third kind of scenario would be, we'll go to town meeting.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think, you know, we appreciate you looking into this. We want everybody to be safe.
Yeah, definitely.
We want people to feel comfortable when they're coming to work.
Yeah.
And, um, it's a crazy world we live in, so...
It really is, yeah.
So did anybody have any questions? You look very pensive right now, Ms. Green.
No, I just think that, I think it'd be easy to find the upfront funding, it's just the annual, we have to increase line items in the annual budget to offset that, so I just don't want that to be, to be missed.
Yep.
So I think it's important regardless, but, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, you're right. We're going to, we're going to need, we're going to need something in our, in the warrant every year to find the...
Yeah, so Eric's going to have to figure out how to, well, we're going to have to figure out, and Eric's going to have to figure out how to increase that line item so that it gets reimbursed every year.
Yeah.
So I think that's just the hardest part, but we'll, we'll be good. That's great. I appreciate the hard work.
Any other questions, guys? All right, great work. Thanks, Steve, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to one-day liquor licenses. We have one for 12/8 for Stephanie Lyden for a craft fair, and then one for 11/25 for a birthday party. I will...
I'm going to go to a craft fair that has a liquor license.
That does make the crafts look a lot more appealing after a glass of wine or what have you.
Sorry.
So I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Uh, committee updates. Uh, Economic Development Committee, we had a fantastic meeting last, uh, Wednesday. We had a presentation by Melissa Johnston, who is a, um, therapist, um, about her vision to revitalize the front part of the building that the, um, uh, food pantry is in, um, known as the nurses quarters up there. Um, she's got a, she's just got a vision about it, to restore it historically, and then to rent it out and get some money for the town.
That is a beautiful piece.
It really is.
It really, it's signed, it's really cute.
And the beauty of that is, is, uh, years ago, we put the roof on, so that kind of stopped that leaking. And then there were some problems with the windows. We, so we've mitigated, you know, continuing damage. There's some damage that was done, but, um, you know, we've got ADA compliance issue, fire compliance. I mean, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to make it sound like it's a slam dunk. It probably would be a little bit pricey, that's the bad news. But the good news is Mr. DeFrayis is on the grant trail. He is, huh, you know, looking for some grant money. Um, it also would appear that that type of a rehabilitation would definitely fall within, um, the parameters of being eligible for community preservation money. Um, so that's good news. Um, in short, we're hoping to do that without any additional, you know, borrowing. Can't guarantee that, we'll have to see where that all goes, but more on that up the road. Um, we also had a discussion with the, um, I don't know if you guys remember, um, seeing this or even hearing about it, but in 2019, um, so auspiciously, we had hired a company, FXM, to do an economic outlook, uh, for Hanson. And then COVID hit, and the whole thing really became virtually irrelevant because everybody's working from home, the traffic patterns have changed, all of the stuff that they kind of focused on needed to be refreshed. So we had a good talk with him. He originally had come back to us and said, well, in order to refresh it, we're going to charge, I, I don't even know, I think it was like $40,000. And once the Economic Development Committee stopped laughing, you know, um, and, you know, killing, you know, splitting aside, we, we said to Tony, we, like, we're asking him to refresh this, not to reinvent the whole thing. So we had a good call with that gentleman. We narrowed down what we wanted him to focus on, and the purpose for this report, what we're going to be using it for, is, um, we're partnering with the South Shore Chamber of Commerce to shop out Hanson and sell it as a place where businesses want to locate. In order to do that, we need to know what businesses would ideally locate in a town like Hanson, and that's what that FXM report gave us, was, you know, like, I think it had, like, educational, it had all these different businesses that would be ideal targets to relocate to Hanson because of the demographics and ta, traffic patterns. So Tony's going to look for, um, the $4,000 that we got the price tag down to, um, to, um, to do that, and that was, um, you know, that's good news. And the other good news is the South Shore Chamber of Commerce is going to come and meet with us, um, and help us figure out how to be a grown-up Economic Development Committee, because we've just sort of been making this up as we've been going along. And they have a lot of, um, experience with other Economic Development Committees. Not every town has one, um, and they want to help us with our vision and, and help work on that. So, again, I, I'm saying we, Economic Development Committee, but if I'm real, it's really Mr. DeFrayis who, um, deserves the lion's share of the credit on that, as per usual. Um, so that's all I had on that. Um, High Street Park Committee update?
Nothing with that or transfer that we didn't talk about last week.
Okay, but you're going to make your pitch for the, this weekend?
This...
Open House?
Yes, I think we're talking at the open house. Um, I forget the time though. So you put me on the spot, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, I want to say it's 10:30, but I'm not 100% on that one.
You probably would, I don't know.
Yeah, wait a minute, did you have that in your announcements?
No, I was, but it is...
Okay.
I was trying to check and look at it on the announcements, but I didn't see it.
So is it 10:30?
I thought it was 10:30.
I believe it.
Or 10, yeah.
I think, I believe it's 10. With a rain date of Sunday...
Yes.
Because it is supposed to be raining Saturday. I'm not saying it's being postponed, but there is a rain date.
Being a little Debbie Downer over there?
If there is a...
Okay.
If, if it does need to be postponed, it will be postponed till the next day.
All right, I didn't mean to put you on this. I just wanted, I thought you had, like, a good opportunity to showcase it, so...
Yeah, I was kind of hoping that, we talked about it last week, so I could, yeah, the same thing as last week.
Give me the, give me the Cliff Notes ahead of time, and I'll follow along with that. Um, all right, McQuinn Property Reuse Committee, nothing to report there, but now we've got another member, so that's exciting.
10.
Recreation Commission Committee, we already talked about that. Um, any other committee updates? Okay. Uh, we've got to get popping on that highway. I'm saying it to you, but really, Ms. Green...
But it's not ready.
Uh, but can, can we get her to press on that?
Get her to press on that?
Yeah.
She's not there.
Well, that's why I'm saying it to you.
So I will, okay, I will press her.
We got to put a bow on that, as I promised to you, the May before you got elected.
Yes.
And here we are.
Here we are.
Yeah. Okay, and then that brings us to the Town Administrator Report. Did you know what she might have?
Actually, I do.
Okay.
The construction of the McQuinn demolition, the building is anticipated to be done by the end of the week. Foundation rubble will be the last phase, and then it'll be removed. Carrie and Charlie have been going to the site in the morning to check with them to make sure that their, the decibel levels of noise is not too much, checking on where the debris is being placed, and that the dust levels are down. She attended a veterans breakfast on Thursday and with the new veterans, Agent Joe Gombakis, Mary Collins, Charlie Baker, and June Waters, who all did a great job. And she also wanted to say thank you to the senior send a chorus, swing singers. They sang theme songs from every division of the military, and everyone enjoyed the breakfast. We have begun the licensing process for all licenses, concubular, Class II Auto Liquor License and Entertainment License through Permit I. The program is up and running. I have been speaking with some businesses who are having a little bit of issue logging in. They can just call me, and I can help them get where they need to go, or direct them to Permit I.
Now, you're saying that as you, not as Lisa?
As me.
Okay, all right, okay. Yep.
I can have Permit I reset their passwords. I don't have that capability. Budget memo was delivered to all departments on November 8th. She and Mary Beth Connor, the Town Administrator of Whitman, will be meeting with the Superintendent of Schools tomorrow to have budget discussions. She is also attending a Mass Municipal Manager Association Conference in Worcester on Thursday and Friday, so she will be out of the office. It'll be me and Emily, so be kind. Grants for the One Stop Program, Mr. DeFrayis has completed the applications, and the town was awarded three out of the five grants he applied for, for a total of $273,576. A reminder to all residents that town hall will be closed on Thursday, November 23rd, as Thanksgiving Day, and Thurs, no, that doesn't make sense. Those days are wrong. Over closed Thanksgiving Day and the Friday afterwards is a long day down. And then the town has been approved for the use of the ARP funds towards the McQuinn demolition for a total of $418,001, and it'll be delivered to the town on December 12th for the Select Board meeting.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, great. I just wanted to update everybody. At our last meeting, we, you guys had encouraged me, slash supported me, to reach out to the Hanover Select Board, and I did so. And I have to say that I spoke with the Chair, Vanessa O'Connor. She couldn't have been lovelier. We had a great conversation. I explained where, what our perspective was on the fireworks site, that we felt as though we were running after a runaway train, and we were not going to be able to jump on board. She said she understood. She did say that she apologized for any miscommunication between the two offices, that she was very much committed to working cooperatively with us, and she knew that her board was looking forward to working with us, and that she would encourage the town manager to work with our town administrator, and that she was probably going to attend our meeting that we hold. She did explain, and I thought it was an interesting vantage point, that, you know, they've been doing these sessions all along, and so people in Hanover would expect that they would have another session there, and that it really wasn't an attempt at anything other than just continuing their best practices that they had had. But honestly, she, I think, called me within five minutes of me sending her an email on their town website, and she couldn't have been more delightful and collaborative and collegial. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, and I told her that I got a little salty and upset about, about it at our meeting. So anyway, I think we're in a good place on that. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will, and then I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. But let's start with the adjournment, shall we?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Fantastic. And now I will entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares, building litigation discussion, fire department, ambulance billing. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 And we are now entering executive session, and we will not be returning to open session.